We're going to reconvene this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education. Welcome to our first meeting of 2019. We're glad to have you here this evening. And with that, I will move it over to superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Just want to take a quick minute to acknowledge the work of our technology team for our one-to-one rollout for our high schools. The high schools, both east and west, and the freshman buildings received about 4,000 laptops just the past week. Things, to my knowledge, are going pretty well, and I see kids nodding their heads in the audience, so that's a good sign to see. So I think it's a step in the right direction. Want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Wesley, Mrs. Heidenreich, for all their work getting that ready, and the learning specialists and our coaches and the staff at both high schools. So got a lot of good momentum going. It was nice to see kids using them in engaging ways, and some of the kids even had them at some of the basketball games this past weekend. So we're taking the right steps. That's it.[69.06][69.06][applause]
That was a tremendous amount of work.
I don't know what Mr. Wesley's doing with his free time, but we'll see.[81.11][81.11][laughter]
Mrs. Logan, do you have any comments?
I do not. Not tonight.
With that, we'll move right into the student spotlight.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Miller, Mrs. Logan. Every November, the Ohio School Boards Association hosts its annual convention in Columbus. Attendees are able to choose from well over 100 sessions during the three-day conference. This year, members of the Lakota staff accounted for five of those sessions, including a spotlight session led by Mr. Miller and Dr. Marshhausen, who's the superintendent of Hilliard City Schools. Mr. Passard and Officer Newman spoke about school safety while Mrs. Logan led a session on salary schedules. This year, two of our presentations had a special component. As we often note, our students say it best. That's why three Lakota students presented alongside our staff to share information to educators from across the state. Tonight, it's my pleasure to recognize Amitaj Kar, Nick Parr, and Landon Metter, along with our staff presenters. Amitaj and Nick presented with Susannah Davis on the importance of Hope Squad and the impact the group is making at both of our high schools. Landon presented with Mr. Lovell and Mr. Miller, teaching attendees about the power of an EdChat, and they even went so far as to lead a live Lakota EdChat from the conference. So please welcome Amitaj, Nick, and Landon to speak about their presentations.[169.01][169.01][applause]
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for not only having us three, but for highlighting your students and giving us the opportunity to present at the OSBA conference. I presented with Nick Parr, who's right here, and we presented about Hope Squads within our district and how we've personally been affected by it. Nick and I thought we weren't getting the best spot when we were the last conference on, we were the last workshop on the last day of the entire conference. However, we were very surprised to see that we basically had a full house even being the last presentation, which just goes to show not only the impact of Lakota local schools, but the importance that Hope Squad truly had within both of our school districts. A highlighted quote that I think summed up the opportunity for me was telling the crowd that "Students are ready for the challenge to empower and help their fellow students with mental health illnesses, but it's up to a school to support them or not." And I am so thankful that Lakota has supported students like me and Nick and so many others like Alyssa's and the crowd as well to be able to help our fellow students who are battling mental illnesses and being able to be a support system within our district. Thank you so much.[256.23][256.23][applause]
I think Amitaj pretty much summed it up. I feel very strongly in the ways that she did, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity from you all to be able to speak at this conference. It was another big factor in me speaking here because I'd already previously spoken about Hope Squads with my current teacher, my current economics teacher, actually, Mr. Dennis, and we visited another conference, and I also talked about Hope Squads with students from other parks, about Summit Country Day and other Lakota West and many other schools. We talked about just the importance of Hope Squads, and I really love the fact that even in this room and in our community and our "We Are Lakota" community that we know the importance of Hope Squads, and we know that this is our first year and we have hit the ground running completely. I think I can speak for both our president and myself at Lakota East that we just finished our Hope Week at Lakota East, and it was one of the most successful weeks and impactful weeks on myself personally. And it was just an amazing opportunity to see the whole school come together. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Davis for the opportunity to go speak with her and Landon for letting us share his presentation with him as well, just to get this big opportunity together as one community. Thank you.[334.00][334.00][applause]
Well, Amitaj did really sum all of ours up. I presented with Mr. Miller and Mr. Lovell, which was a great honor, first off, about the EdChats and the power of EdChats in Lakota and how it can be used by any district. And that was one of the things I want to say thank you to the board, Mr. Miller, and every, Mrs. Davis, Mr. Card, all the administrators in Lakota for really embracing the students, branding the district, but allowing students not only to find their voice, but to find what has become the Lakota family. It wasn't like this before, at least in my opinion, but now, I mean, truly, and as cliche as it continues to sound, the "We Are Lakota" has empowered students, the EdChats have empowered students, in moments like this where we are speaking to the board, to the highest-ranking officials within the school as students. And it is a great honor every day to be able to work side-by-side, Mrs. Davis, Mr. Miller, and the rest of the board every single day. And being able to take that maturity leap from being a high school student to really seeing different sides of school. I could say I've been to the principal's office more than probably some of the worst people in our school. And I have been, most kids don't even know where Central Office is, and I feel like this is a weekly route for me.[409.43][409.43][laughter] So I want to say thank you for allowing us to be able to be a part of your lives and you to be a part of ours, and supplying what has really become a second education to me in the real world. And, I mean, everything has been truly amazing, and the EdChat just simplifies it all up. It's talking to adults, it's talking to students, it's just one big conversation, and that's how it's been all year and the past few years. And I hope, you know, it continues to grow in the future. So thank you.[433.53][433.53][applause]
Before we do some additional recognition, I'm going to ask Mr. Passard to come up to the podium along with Officer Newman to talk just briefly about their presentation on school safety. And again, it's nice that, I can make one of those guys come up, I'm not sure I can get the other guy, I guess I can. But just talk about their presentation a little bit, and glad that Lakota had a presence at Capitol Conference in terms of safety as well.
You're welcome.
Yes. Really, it was a joint effort between myself, Jeff, and Kristi. She's the one from BCI Consulting. She's the one who put together most of the presentation, and we just talked about the different layers and filters of securities that go into a school system nowadays. So there's a lot of things you can do from an infrastructure standpoint, a lot of things you can do from a safety training standpoint. And I think we do a good job at Lakota looking at all different aspects of safety in regards to both the physical infrastructure piece and the law enforcement piece. And Officer Newman can talk about this portion of that, no?
Yeah.
No. And really, we had a lot of different questions about, you know, we had questions like, if you could only choose one or two things, what would they be for safety? Things that we looked about, you know, first, you've got to be able to secure your building, so being able to lock down your building, have locks down. But after that, for me, having an SRO is the next most important thing. People think of SRO as someone that hated as a person with a weapon in our school. That's not what it's about for us. It's about building those relationships, those connections, and really having that community policing that goes on to thwart anything that may happen and build those relationships with our students. So if anything does come up, they're a resource that they can go to. So it's a lot more than just having a person with a firearm in our building. It's much greater than that. And Jeff knows, he's been SRO in a couple of different routines. You can talk about how much that's changed.
It was just nice to represent Lakota because I think that, over the years, we've done a lot of good change, and we've made some changes that I requested be made years ago. And it's just like everybody else, we're just not on board. And we got on board, and I'm very proud of what we've done. My administration have backed our SROs. Sheriff Jones has backed their SROs, and we do a good group. Together, we do, you know, as a group, we're good with our safety plans and our lockdown drills and all the things that we do. But it was just amazing, actually, I was proud that we have made those changes, but it still amazes me that we still have districts in the state of Ohio that were almost questioning me on some of the more basic things that we do. We've been doing them, doing them well for 10 years, including our kids, our teachers, our staff, our SROs, our administrators. So it just amazed me that there were so many people in that group, because we had a pretty big group in our breakout, but it, once again, it was just, I was proud to represent, to be the only SRO to represent Lakota, because I, like I said, I think we, I think we're one of the best in the country, but maybe I'm bragging a bit too much. But so, I think you guys know that I'm not, I don't talk, I'm not a talker, I don't like to talk, so I'm going to go ahead and stop. But I appreciate it. Thank you.[665.49][665.49][applause]
I think they kind of covered it there, don't you?
Yeah.
All right. We'll do pictures and stuff? All right, let's do that.
We also had some other administrators who clearly don't want to talk about what they did, but Mrs. Logan also presented, Mr. Lovell presented, Mr. Miller, as well as Mrs. Davis, who's back there, presented.
They're all trying to hide.
I think they're all trying to hide, because I think they'll at least come up for a picture.[701.93][701.93][laughter]
Are we doing the picture?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chris.
Don't you get a t-shirt? That's all I care about.
You've got to start by the shirt.
I think so.
I don't know what we're doing.
Are we doing one picture?
Yeah.
Mr. Passard.
I think so.
I don't think it's that guy.
I don't think so.
I don't know what we're doing.
Are we doing one picture?
Are we doing one picture?
Yeah.
Are we doing one picture?
Yeah.
Are we doing one picture?
It didn't look like it did.
It would look like it was still.
Walk away.
Where?
To have them all here, I don't think that's ever happened.
We've reached our first opportunity for public comment. If there's anything that you would like to speak to that is related to something that's on the agenda, you may come and do public comment at this point. Seeing no one, we'll go into board reports, policy, and we'll still have those who were on these committees during 2018 do the reports today.
We do not have any updates for policy.
All right, community engagement.
Sorry.
We had a community conversation last, I don't know.
Thursday, I believe.
Thursday, about adverse childhood experiences with a doctor from Children's Hospital, and we will have a follow-up January 23rd, next week. And then we also have a community conversation on January 22nd with the marching band.
Yes.
And DPC, we haven't had a DPC meeting. There was supposed to be a president's meeting last Thursday, but the chairman got sick, so it was just me and three people, a little chat. Oh, and we had a coffee chat. We had a coffee chat last Wednesday that was very well-attended, about 28 people. I don't think I have anything else. I was woefully unprepared to give a report.
Butler Tech?
Butler Tech held their organizational meeting and regular meeting last Tuesday. There are a number of changes happening, all kind of like what we did this evening. Number of changes happening on the campuses with updates to labs and some of the other facilities. They've started a mechatronics program that'll be on the DeRussel Lee campus. An aviation program is happening at Butler Regional Airport, and some other changes just in term of where we're investing some dollars into programming and facilities. Butler Tech will be attending a national policy seminar that'll be in March. I will serve as the legislative liaison for Butler Tech, so Kelly and I will be right there doing the fun stuff together. And looking forward to those conversations. And the two officers that were last year's president and vice president will remain in place as well. That's all I have for now.
How was your conference?
I have a conference at the end of this month.
That other one that you went to, Butler Tech, the, okay, I don't know what all the letters mean, ACT?
A-C-T-E, San Antonio, that was in December.
How was that?
It was a good conference, actually. There was some great information in terms of some of the things that we've been talking about with social and emotional needs, some of the, a lot of testing and some of the tools that we might be using. For instance, you might look up the USA Skills Set. It's a survey for students, and it goes toward the workforce development piece and career readiness, and rather or not, we're using those tools. And I actually have said to Matt, we might need to look at some of those things within our area as well, just as an assessment tool. So it was good. There was some good information to come back from it.
Finance committee report, thank you, Linda. Jenny, you want to take this, or Linda, or?
Sure. We had a follow-up finance committee meeting last Friday where we reviewed three different policies. One was taking a look at setting up a reserve like a rainy day fund. The other was, we currently have a financial philosophy which says our cash balance won't fall below 60 days, but it's not in its own standalone policy. So this one would be a standalone policy and increasing that to 90 days. And it also had a paragraph that spoke more about the superintendent and aligning things to the strategic plan and asking to spend additional dollars. And then the third policy was a balanced budget policy which takes a look at your reoccurring revenues and your reoccurring expenses, and those one-time things that would make your, you not be a balanced budget, you know, would kind of be excluded. But it, right now, the way we look at things is a balanced budget is line 6010. I'm sure you all know that on the five-year forecast, but this goes a little bit deeper than that. So we talked about that, as well as our assessed valuation, we talked about that, our effective millage rates, which have decreased over time. So we reviewed a lot of stuff and then set our next meeting, I believe, for February 22nd. Does that sound right?
That's right.
Jenny, do you want to give the board a little more information on the assessed valuation history, just for where that?
Sure. So assessed valuation, our assessed valuation, we just went through an update. So every, every six years, you do a total revaluation of the property in the county, and then every third year, you do an update. And so we went through an update. We saw double-digit increases in residential, commercial, and industrial, which is great, but I want us to all be cautious because last time we saw huge double-digit increases, you know, it was also, then we saw some decreases. So it always makes me, I always pause and say, okay, is this, like, going to continue throughout the years? Or I don't think we're going to get back to every year, double-digit increases. So it's great to see. We'll see what happens in the next year and beyond, but we saw some nice growth, which is what we're seeing around here. We're seeing a lot of building, especially in Liberty Township. So it was nice to see. But the other piece to that is our effective millage rates over time, like the past five years. Because those values have been increasing, that effective millage has been decreasing. So we're going to look into that a little bit more and be able to report back some more information on that, but yeah.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything, Kelly?
I don't think so. It was a good meeting. Lots of information. Thank you. Legislative committee?
I had mentioned in an email today that there's a webinar coming up that I'll represent the district on later, on lame duck legislation. And the Bassel Legislative Meeting was supposed to be tomorrow. They kicked it to next week. I think Governor Dewine's making a lot of changes fast coming in, and I think it'll really be a benefit to us. So looking forward to some of those changes. One of those would be the new Office of Child Initiatives, that was one of his first acts once he was sworn in. So we already have had conversations about the people that are in that office, talking about ways that we can be a partner with them in terms of innovation. They want to do some Ohio Innovation Grants, and I'm hoping that we can be a part of that. So stay tuned. That's all I had on the legislative.
Jenny?
OASBO's Legislative Committee, we're going to have a meeting the 31st of this month to review some things, talk about the lame duck session as well. Had a meeting of the CUP Patterson Work Group last week, and they're encouraging us to meet with our elected officials. So Legislative Committee, we need to start doing that and communicating that a little bit more, and as well as the community. And we did review that a little bit in the Finance Committee as well. So more to come. Work ongoing with that.
So at the federal level, there's probably not very many of us that aren't aware of the government shutdown and where that's going, and some of the feedback Senator Portman has been talking about, including something with the Dreamers Act, to hopefully bring about it into that. And our other legislators at the federal level have weighed in as well, and I think we'll just be in the process of watching it. Presidential candidates are already starting to come out. That'll be interesting to watch as well. For Columbus updates, at the end of the, actually in this month, Governor Kasich, as he was leaving, appointed four new people, and he had four appointments on the board. Those people, most of them are not on the board any longer, so he appointed four different people with business backgrounds. The House Speaker in Columbus is now Larry Householder, and there will be new committee chairs that will be coming out. We expect that in the next week or so. The tax revenues for the state, which will impact the biennial budget coming up at the end of this fiscal year, remain on track with a projection of 1.1 in the black. Hopefully that bodes well for where our budget ends up being. The rainy day fund, which they call the Budget Stabilization Fund, is at 2.7 billion, so that's in a healthy state as well. There's a new state office that's been developed between the Dewine-Houstead group, and Houston will be running that, and that will be called Innovate Ohio, and that's about using technology to improve state government operations. I'm not sure how that will affect us on a local level, but it may. The biennial budget process will be starting soon, and Governor Dewine will be proposing his budget by March 15th. It will then go to the House, who will make adjustments to it, and then it will go to the Senate, and then there'll be some kind of a reconciliation. And we're expecting that budget to come out before the end of the fiscal year in June. We don't have a specific date yet. I had already mentioned I'll be attending the Advocacy Institute at the end of this month in DC, and the focus for those visits will be on the Special Education Law, IDEA. And I've asked both the Butler Tech Superintendent and Matt, and the Butler Tech Treasurer, and Jenny, to weigh in on that and how the funds are affected, and how we might better improve those laws. So as they look at reauthorizing that, that feedback will be going on legislative visits. I also have a legislative seminar with the Career Tech Organization next week in Columbus. I'll be on the same webinar as Matt, and I was going to mention the meeting with Coley and Lang as well to sit down and explain the CUP Patterson funding formula and what they've been talking about, and ask for their support on that. Any questions? Brad, anything?
No. Most of what you spoke about I have in that written legislative update, which will be posted on Board Docs.
That's it.
Thank you. Matt, diversity committee?
Nothing this month.
Okay. Treasurer's recommendations, we have approval of minutes and, in accordance with Board Policy 6320, approval of the invoice for then and now. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. And before we get to closing comments, I see we do not have today on our agenda a second public comment opportunity. So do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add a second public comment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. Under superintendent's recommendations, we have approval of personnel items and approval of donations. Do I have a motion? A motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I do have, we have a donation from LSO for $16,000 in improvements to the fields on our property, so a thank you to them for that improvement. So Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. And before we get to closing comments, I see we do not have today on our agenda a second public comment opportunity. So do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add a second public comment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. And before we get to closing comments, I see we do not have today on our agenda a second public comment opportunity. So do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add a second public comment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. So at this point, if anyone would like to make a public comment, they may do so by approaching the podium. Go and exercise a facility. Seeing no one, we'll move to closing comments.
It's all about the opportunity.
Yeah. So Matt, we'll start with you.
Just really quick, appreciate the kids that came out tonight and talked about student voice, and obviously, that's been a big push for us in the district. And I'm amazed that with all of our kids, with the three that came up tonight, no note cards, nothing, and you think they've been practicing for months. And I think it just comes from the heart and comes from what they're living. So kudos to the kids.
Yeah, the maturity level of our students just amazes me. Yeah, to stand in front of a podium and none of them looked nervous. They did the same thing with their presentations in front of school board members. Thankfully, they're representing us, Lakota. It's great. The other thing, too, I know, you know, the presence of the SROs and the Westchester Police, I don't know, for me, it was wonderful to see them sitting there. And then also, I know in the news where we had the police officer who lost his life. It's just been, I think, on my mind, I'm sure it's been on the minds of a lot of us, to be very thankful for what they do every day for us. And it's just nice to have that presence here tonight. So that's it.
Very proud of our students and how well you represent us and what a great job you've done. Our Spark students are here as well. We've got several. And we're doing a good job with these kids. They're making us, they're making us proud, absolutely. I want to say thank you also to Todd and his group. I know that that's been a tremendous amount of effort in a pretty quick period of time to turn that around and make that opportunity happening in the middle of the school year for our kids. So really appreciate that extra effort. Also want to say thank you to our Westchester Police and Fire Department, our Butler County Sheriffs, and our Liberty Township Fire Department, and everything they do every day for our students and for our communities.
and Mrs. Schaefer on your new leadership roles on the board as well. Looking forward to a great year under your leadership.
Jenny, may I do one more thing? I'm sorry. I wanted to mention that there is a community observance of Martin Luther King Day. Didn't put that out in front of me. That will be at West, starting at the Clock Tower at 10:30. And there'll be a walk over to Lakota West, and that program, which has, features our students, will be at 11:15, followed by a lunch. So, I wanted to issue that to anybody who'd like to join us on Monday. Lakota West, and it begins at the Clock Tower at 10:30. Hope you all can be there.
And surely, it can't be as cold as last year.
It was so cold last year.
We're supposed to have snow, so who knows?
It's supposed to snow over the weekend, so, yeah.
So, the march part may not happen, but we'll still have the luncheon and the program part.
We marched last year. In the snow. So, why not? And Brad mentioned momentum, and this is the, we just announced in the last newsletter that this is the third consecutive year that Lakota has received a Momentum Award from the state. And again, we always talk about that we're so much more than testing, and that doesn't define us. But that certainly is nice to get that recognition. And, in my opinion, that piece of it, which talks about value added, is the most valuable, in my opinion, because it, it looks at the actual progress that the kids are making from where they are to where they're going. And actually, two schools in the district got straight A's, and there are only 59 school, or 57 schools in the entire state that got the straight A's. And so, for Lakota to have two of the 57 is pretty darn impressive. So, just wanted to give a shout out to that very nice honor. And again, in the category that I think when I look at all the metrics that they use, is the most meaningful to me when I look at the, the scorecard and, you know, how so many of them, in my opinion, can be somewhat convoluted. The momentum piece, to me, is the one that is most meaningful. So, just wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you for all the hard work that goes into that and making sure that those kids, each and every one of them are growing, which is what that really looks at. So, appreciate all the hard work that's going in day in and day out to make sure that's happening in our classrooms. So, with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And our meeting with the most motions of the year is now over. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.